May we have a roll call, please?
Student Board Member Silwal.
Present.
Student Board Member Athanayek.
Present.
Board Member Tutein.
Present.
Board Member Clark.
Here.
Vice President Stapleton Gray.
Here.
President Black.
Here. Noted, Member Charles Blanchard is not here. I have a short resolution to read. Whereas Board Bylaw 9250 states, quote, "If a member does not attend all board meetings during the month, he or she is eligible to receive a percentage of the monthly compensation equal to the percentage of meetings attended unless otherwise authorized by the Board in accordance with law." And whereas, Board Bylaw 9250 further states, "A member may be paid for meetings he or she missed when the Board by resolution finds that he or she was performing designated services for the district at the time of the meeting, or that he or she was absent because of illness, jury duty, or hardship deemed acceptable by the Board. And whereas Charles Blanchard is missing the regular Board meeting for October 10th, 2017 because of personal hardship, therefore be it resolved that the Board excuses Charles Blanchard from attendance at the October 10th, 2017 meeting because of hardship." Can we have a motion to pass this resolution?
I move we pass that resolution.
You have a second.
I second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Jackie, I will email you the text of this so you don't have to type it into the minutes.
Thank you. Does it have a number? Resolution number?
No, I think you can assign one.
Thank you.
Okay, going on, for those who wish to participate, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will now have a reading of the AUSD Mission and Vision Statement.
The mission of the Albany Unified School District is to provide excellent public education that empowers all to achieve their fullest potential as productive citizens. Albany Unified School District is committed to creating comprehensive learning opportunities in safe, supportive, and collaborative environments, addressing the individual needs of each student.
Thank you. There was no action taken and closed session. Next is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes requested to the agenda? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I motion to approve the agenda.
I second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Tonight, we have a spotlight on Cornell Elementary School.
Thank you, President Black, trustees, and student board members and community. I would like to turn this over to our Cornell Elementary Principal, Heather Duncan, who is going to introduce this item, and it looks like each of us have a little something.
It's my pleasure to be here. I'm actually going to introduce Elaine Wong, one of our terrific science teachers, who's going to do some work with you and a presentation on the bulk of our science program for pull-out for fourth and fifth. And then at the end, I'm just going to speak briefly about what kindergarten through third grade teachers do, and I'm so excited to spotlight science. I've actually been wanting to spotlight science since the beginning of our spotlights, but there have been other great things to spotlight, and so I've been kind of holding it in the background. And I was so thrilled when Amanda Cohen and Elaine said they would put something together, but I do want to give some great credit to Elaine because she's done the lion's share of this, but Amanda too, who isn't here and really hoped as well. Okay? So, welcome.
So, my name's Elaine Wong, and I am the elementary science specialist. I teach at both Cornell and Marin. I've been with the district for 15 years and have enjoyed every year that I've taught the science. So, to start off the activity, let's make sure this is all connected. Is this working? There it goes. Wait a minute. Perfect, okay. All right, so this is a snapshot of the Cornell classroom, the science classroom right there, that students go through every day. But before I actually start the highlight, one thing that I was wanting to do was to do a little activity. Something that, you know, each of you should have a little strip of paper that looks like this, and there's also a little clip. And this is something that I always try to do with myself. Try to do something fun and engaging and get them excited about science. So, right here, using only one pre-cut strip of paper and a small binder clip, make the paper strip twirl when it's thrown in the air. So, yes, I have to see board members, you know, toss things into the air right now safely, and you have one minute to try different ideas of how to do it. So, how would you clip this binder clip? And get it to twirl. And a hint, you have to make it go about 10 feet. And audience members are more than welcome to do it too.
I'm an engineer.
One minute starting now.
I'm a pre-engineer.
I think Jim has something going there.
This isn't working. Wait, this isn't working.
I want to teach her.
And it's one of the things that I have students do, is that they observe what other students are doing, and they learn from each other, and then eventually they'll find a way that works, and then they, you know, and they find ways. See, that Alan has something as well.
Are you supposed to throw it up or far?
Yeah. I don't know. One. I think this is it. I don't know where to throw it.
And one thing is, I never tell students that there's only one right way on this, because any, you know, thing, if it actually does twirl, that is, you know, the answer. And, you know, and it's fun to see what works, why can't it, how can you get it to twirl? All right. So, if you're not feeling successful, one way of doing it is to clip the two ends together and then just lob it, and, you know, and it twirls.
That's what you do.
And usually, if you're trying to tie it to the highest table, safety course, I try to toss it as high as I can, and then let it watch it twirl. Oh, okay, now I get what we're supposed to be doing. This happens to me a lot in class. I don't know what we're doing all the time. All right. I know, it's one of the things, you just can't stop playing when you're doing science.
That's fine, we're good. Especially if you leave them there.
All right. Guys, did it work?
No.
Yeah. Like I said, if you feel stuck, you know, it's like doing it like this does work, you know, this method, just take, putting the two ends together and clipping it, and then tossing it about 10 feet.
Oh, yeah, it's a...
All right, so back to business, so the foundations of Cornell's science program. So, one thing is that K-5 teachers use the full option science system, also known as FOS curriculum, developed at the Lawrence Hall of Science, and lessons are focused on meaningful, active learning experience that connects students to the natural world. Cornell Science is in the process of transitioning towards the next generation science standards, but right now, we don't have the actual curriculum to support it. Science specialists teach fourth and fifth grade students in the science classroom during prep time of the fourth and fifth grade classroom teachers. And science is taught by the classroom teachers in K-3, and their all three lessons are usually integrated into their reading and math programs. Fifth grade field trips to Chabot Space and Science Center, the Lawrence Berkeley National Lab, as well as the UC Technical Gardens enhances our science program. And in terms of the next generation science standards in Cornell, science specialists such as me and Amanda Cohen are integrating the elements of the NGSS into fourth and fifth grade science lessons through the use of focus questions, creating models to explain phenomena, and organizing sense-making circles during class discussions. And so, right here, we have, you know, things like A, B, C, D, E's of modeling, how it has to be accurate, has to be big, colorful, detailed, and can explain and be predictive of what they're describing. And then we also have talk strategies when we get into sense-making circles that we practice using eye contact and having partner talk to practice our ideas, learn how to piggyback off each other's ideas, and also respectfully disagreeing, because sometimes they get very contentious about their ideas. Now, with our, the NGSS standards, there's things like the science and engineering practices, which are basically how scientists do their work. So, we teach students, you know, these basic practices. We also have cross-cutting concepts, which is basically ideas of how scientists connect what they learn, connect different branches of science together, and look for the patterns that it expands and integrate with how they think. And then we have the disciplinary core ideas, or basically is what scientists learn and what students are learning. And each of these elements are seen through K-12, and during each grade span, whether it's K-5, or 6, 8, or 9, 12, they're at a different level, and we build off of each other. So, Cornell Science Specialist, so my name's Elaine Wong, and I teach fourth and fifth grade science at Cornell Marin. Amanda Cohen, she's also, she's fourth and fifth grade science at Cornell and Ocean View. And Amanda has been teaching with Albany for 10 years, a total of 26 years, doing fourth through ninth grade science and math. We both hold a multiple subject teaching credential, as well as a single subject teaching credential in foundational level general science. We serve over 300 Albany students weekly, we each serve over 300 students weekly, and we evaluate each student's based on their strengths with science and engineering practices, contact knowledge, as well as class participation. For our fourth and fifth grade science program, fourth and fifth grade students each receive two one-hour science lessons each week. The fourth grade science, the FOS modules include magnetism and electricity, solid earth, as well as environment module. Third grade FOS curriculums include mixtures and solutions, water planet, and living systems. All fourth and fifth grade students participate in the Cornell Science Investigations Fair each year in the spring. And here's, you know, some students working in our Cornell's science classroom, you know, they always work collaboratively, and they record data and observations and responses into their science notebooks. And here's a fourth grade lesson on simple circuits, where students learn how to light bulbs, complete simple circuits, interact with various conductors to exploit the strength of electric current. We also do a lesson on pendulums, where students learn about variables and experiments, look for patterns in their data, and relate their observations to energy transfer. In the classroom, we also have bulletin boards that that change throughout the year, and that is to reinforce important ideas, and sometimes I try to include real objects in there so that they can, when they're learning about tools, they can see those tools being referred back onto the wall. I also sometimes include a directive of bulletin boards. And when they're interactive, what's great about it is that they can see certain facts. Like right here, there's an activity where they can actually interact with, where magnets will stick this magnet right there, and it sticks to the screen and the washer, and other things are made of steel. Right here, the magnet is not really sticking to any of these items, it just kind of hangs there. We also have examples of series and parallel circuits. With a series circuit, there's a little switch they could turn on, and the lights would be very dim here. With a parallel circuit, they put the switch on, you'll see the lights are brighter. There's also a circuit board right here to test if objects are conductors or insulators, and if it's a conductor, the motor, which is right there, would run. If it's an insulator, it would not run. So, they do these activities at their table groups, but they also can practice again later on when they're done with the activity. We also have boards that try to synthesize ideas of various topics to show patterns. So, in this case, right here, it's layers of, sorry, layers of different things like the sun, the earth, soil, and atmosphere, to show that the reason why we have layers is because there's different properties, and we try to differentiate these properties, and that's why there's layers. Funding sources. So, for our science program, the K-5 FOS replacements are thankfully, you know, paid for by the Albany Unified School District, so we don't have to worry about going out of pocket to have these wonderful science lessons. And the district has also funded professional development for us to attend things like the FOS Next Gen workshops over the summer, or attend the California NGSS rollouts. We were able to attend numbers two through four, as well as attend the Oakland Unified School District Science Symposiums, which they've held for the past two years. And every other year, we can also attend the California Science Teacher Association Conferences. I've also applied for grants from Donors Choose and the Sherman's Fuel Your School Programs to get materials to support lessons that, to learn about renewable energy. And the AEF has also provided grants for me to get things like the Data Hub probe wear, so kids can actually use fancy equipment to measure things like air pressure, or even a sunspot telescope to find sunspots on the sun safely without looking at the sun directly. And here's an example of something I got from Donors Choose, which was a renewable energy kit, where students are trying to engineer a wind car, so they have to work together using all these little bits from a K-Next kit. And what they have to do is that they have to figure out how to build a wind car by blowing, and they would use things like a piece of paper or a paper plate, and see which is more effective, and then try to test it and see which goes further. So, that's one thing that we do there, have fun. And for Cornell's Science Investigation Fair, this is something that showcases the fourth and fifth grade science investigations, completely optional for K-3 students. Students learn how to record data and draft a science report. They also present their science investigations to their classmates, and students create a display board for the Cornell Science Investigation Fair. And with this, it's always fun, because, you know, they could choose whatever topic they want. In this case, this student did pancake chemistry, and she was doubling recipes or having recipes, and seeing what happens if you took one ingredient and you doubled or tripled it, and pictures to show how it looked, some were flat, some were really fluffy, some did not taste good at all. So, it was just fun for her to do that particular experiment. Now, in 2015, I was actually able to submit some of the displays to the Albany County Fair. And so, I was able to submit 10 from Cornell, 10 from Marin, total 20. And one fifth grader from Cornell was able to win the best of class ribbon in the fourth, fifth grade division for science displays. So, it was really nice to see that awesome ribbon that, you know, made by Cornell, or received by Cornell student. All right, so here's a sample second grade lesson from Annie's class. So, right here, students are doing an experiment that's in the balance and motion kit, where they have a template right here that they have to try to make paper clips, straws, and cardboard, paper balance together. So, they have to cut out the squares that they need, as well as figure out how to piece together the straws and the paper clips, and then figure out what's the best way to get to balance. And when they get to the balance part, will it all balance well on that center beam? And then I have, Ms. Duncan, share their ideas.
Do you have any questions or comments? Do you have any?
Oh, I just wanted to say thank you, Elaine, for bringing an activity to us and sharing so much about how science, how you're teaching science in the classroom now. I also wanted to say that I'd really love for a chance to play with your interactive bulletin board, that looked great.
Thank you.
Jacob?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you very much, and just to actually acknowledge that we're very fortunate to have science teachers like you at our schools. Both my son and daughter go to Cornell, and I want to thank you very much. And actually, the letter you sent out recently is hanging on a refrigerator.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. I would just like to say that, like, things like this, especially in the science areas, I remember me when I went to elementary school, these were like the highlight of my year, because it gave me a chance to explore a bunch of science topics and really put my heart into it, and find out a lot of cool things, and also see what other people did. So, I think, I just want to say thank you so much for being a teacher, and also thank you for, like, having things like this, this is really important.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Your enthusiasm comes through, and that's really important. Kids get a good feeling for how much fun science can be, and maybe they can carry that with them.
Thank you.
Yeah, I really wanted to have a chance to spotlight science this year, because I do think that sometimes we don't realize what's going on in the science room, and an awful lot is happening in there, and we have terrific science teachers. Just briefly, in kindergarten through third grade, they also use the FOS program. And in kindergarten, they work on units and trees, animals two by two, and wooden paper. I don't know if Elaine mentioned, but the FOS system was developed at Lawrence Hall of Science, so I don't know if everybody's aware of that, but I'm really fond of that, of the Lawrence Hall of Science. First grade classes, all the units really encourage the children to explore our world and how they can interpret their experience. The classes study weather in their earth science, they solid, they do solids and liquids through physical science, and in life science, they study animals, their habitats, and the life cycle of plants. In second grade, they learn about, as you saw with Annie's class, balance, motion, and focus through hands-on experiments. In life science, they study about plants and insects, and in earth science, they study about pebbles, sand, and silt, and how drainage and erosion happens. And in third grade, they study about the multiple forms of matter and energy. They become familiar with the sun, moon, stars, and planets, and they do that through outdoor observations, reading, videos, discussion, and art, and I think we even have a stargazing evening at Cornell. So, that's just a quick summary of kindergarten through third, and then more about fourth and fifth. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, our pleasure.
Does anyone else in the audience want to ask questions or comment?
What's that?
It's still available, only can answer if I know.
Okay, thank you very much.
I always want to put that, you know, disclaimer out.
Okay. Next up, we have a resolution, Resolution 2171805, Week of the School Administrator.
Thank you, President Black, trustees, and student board members. This year, October 8th through 14th, 2017, has been designated by the State of California as Week of the School Administrator. Albany administrators provide outstanding leadership at sites and district-wide, and it's the efforts of our leadership team that are appreciated by students, staff, parents, as well as, I know, our board. Our Albany leaders are dedicated professionals who commit long hours beyond their normal workday in the interest of Albany students, staff, and the community. And so, this week's resolution I'm bringing forth for the Board, I want to wait and present once, or if, you know, the Board makes its, passes the resolution, that I would like to present it to the district leadership team. So, I don't have anything yet, because we have to get it signed after the Board.
We have a resolution to read?
We have the resolution. Would you like me to read it, or would you like to read it?
You can read it.
Okay, there you go. Week of the school, Albany Unified School District, Board of Education, Resolution Number 2017-18-05, Week of the School Administrator. Whereas, the title "School Administrator" is a broad term used to define many educational leadership posts, superintendents, principals, assistant principals, school business officials, classified leaders, and all school district directors are considered administrators. And whereas, providing quality leadership and service for student success is paramount for the profession. And whereas, public schools operate with lean management systems, across the nation, public schools employ fewer managers and supervisors than most public and private sector industries. And whereas, the future of California's public education system depends upon the quality of its leadership. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the governing board of the trustees of the Albany Unified School District proclaims October 8th through 14th, 2017, to be Week of the School Administrator. Be it further resolved that the governing board of trustees of the Albany Unified School District encourages all members of our community to join with in personally expressing appreciation to our administrators for their leadership, dedication, and devotion to their work. Passed and adopted by the governing board of trustees of the Albany Unified School District on this 10th day of October, 2017.
Thank you. We have any comments or questions? Okay, I'd just like to comment that we do have a terrific staff of administrators I've had the privilege of working with for quite a few years now, and really, nothing can happen in the school district without leaders making it possible for the teachers and the rest of the staff to get their jobs done. So, I just want to express my appreciation for the work the administrators do. We have a motion.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve Resolution 2017-18-05.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor of approving this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I think you might have, we have one person who wanted to comment.
I promise I'll keep it short and sweet. My name's David Hopper, the Assistant Principal at the middle school. I think in my first year at Albany Middle School, or in the district, I was told that I had to come, and so I've been here every year since, so just thank you. I think that was the new guy initiation piece. As a unified management team, we really appreciate this resolution from the Board recognizing the value and importance of strong school and district leadership. It's easy for all employees to dedicate themselves and their lives to the mission of Albany, which academic success and equity for all are cornerstones. Albany is a unique district that values all stakeholders, from students to parents, teachers to support staff, administrators to community members. On behalf of the administrative team, we'd like to thank you for equally valuing us and our roles, both now and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Anyone else want to comment? Okay, that brings us to the consent calendar. I should mention that the minutes that are in the consent calendar in the board packet have been revised. The revised version was sent by email to all the board members?
As well as sent out in all the normal ways that we post the packet.
Posted, and there are copies, paper copies in the back.
That is correct.
Okay. Are there, is there anything in the consent calendar anyone wants to comment on, or any items they want to pull for a separate vote? Does anyone in the audience want to comment on the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, do we have a motion on the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I second.
Thank you. All in favor of approving the consent calendar, say aye.
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 Brings us to Board and Superintendent Report.
Thank you, President Black. I have two things to report. First, we, I want to announce that we have our Town Hall Budget Meeting that is going to be on October 21st from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Albany Middle School gym. We will be sending out an email notification on October the 16th, and we'll make sure that is posted on our website, on Facebook and Twitter, and I'm going to try and work it so that we can actually get it out on Nextdoor. If, usually, the city's really good about posting important events for us to get it out to all of the Albany community. The second thing is, I just wanted to share, and I think we all agree, that our hearts and our well wishes go out for those who were devastated by the Napa and Sonoma fires that are still going on right now. The last count, 1,500 homes being burned, several businesses, and some missing folks. So, just really want to say that our hearts and our well wishes go out for, to these people in Sonoma and in Napa. Also, the air quality, according to the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, has put out a Spare the Air Alert for today and tomorrow. I put out an information on our school websites, as well as our district website, and it's also out on Nextdoor, that we have asked our principals to be very, very mindful about making sure that we have our students as many indoor activities as possible. Our athletic director working with our coaches on sporting events, as well as practices, that we want to make sure that our students and staff have the best air quality possible. I will continue to provide updates on our website until we get what they call, I guess, the green light from the Bay Area Quality Management, but right now, it's still pretty hazy out there. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I just wanted to talk briefly about a couple of things I've done in the last couple of weeks. On September 29th, me and Val met with a couple of parents over at Cornell to kind of assess the crossing guard situation. An email was sent to the Board from an individual named Andrea Weber, and we met her at Marin and Talbot to see how dangerous it was, and that was for the late bird time at around 9:20. And we also met with another parent, Sabine Clinch, who met us over at Solano and Talbot for the early bird drop-off. And I know that there's still discussions going on about what we're going to do with the cross guards. I'm just advocating that we do something as soon as possible in December. It basically stops or is cut in half, and I know that we have two by two by two meetings, I'm not part of those, but I'm hoping that we can have those be more often than I heard they were quarterly. I mean, this is a really serious issue, and the city and the school district and UC needs to really hash things out and work it out, because to me, it's not an option if we're going to have six guards or not. You know, we can talk about where the funding is going to come from, but to me, it's just ridiculous that we're even talking about only having three crossing guards for all of our schools. So, that was one of the things I did. I also went to the Sillie Olympics last Sunday at Cornell, it was wonderful. I volunteered for a couple of hours, got to see a lot of the parents and the children. And after I was done volunteering, I spoke to quite a few parents, and they're really concerned about the upcoming budget cuts. And I would like to let people know that Val and Alan are coming to Cornell on Thursday from 6:00 to 7:30 for a PTA meeting, so anybody can come. You don't necessarily have to be a parent of a Cornell student. I know they're going other places to meet people, but I think it's a great opportunity to talk to them, where they can answer questions, opposed to at board meetings, if it's not on the agenda, they can't respond, well... on the agenda, they can't respond, well, this is a time that they can respond. And I would also like to say that I'm trying to reach out to as many people as possible in the community. These budget cuts that are coming up are, they're going to be severe, and cuts always hurt, you know, but people need to get active, you know. It's still a couple of months away, but the time goes by really fast. And the more we hear from the community, we can make a more informed decision. So I'm just making a call out to everybody to please reach out to us as much as possible, and maybe ask it to be agendized for a future board meeting. I mean, this is really serious, what's about to happen. So, thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Jacob. Anything else?
Thanks Jacob for reminding me about the Walk and Roll to School Day. And I visited a couple of corners as well, and Allen was out at the corner on International Walk and Roll to School Day last Wednesday. Especially with the construction going on, on Marin Avenue, it's very difficult to safely reach Cornell from the south side of Marin. And I know that crossing guard has been moved to try to accommodate kids crossing over, but I definitely saw kids threading their way through the construction and trying to get over, get across by themselves. I, I do agree that I'd really like to see us find a stable source of funding for six crossing guards.
Thank you. Any, anything else? Student board member report.
Congratulations are in order. Albany Middle School received the 2017 National Blue Ribbon School Award. The recognition is based on the school's overall academic performance and progress in closing the achievement gaps among student subgroups. Albany Middle School is one of two schools in California to win, and the only public school to win this award.
The 22nd Silly Olympics at Cornell Elementary were this past Sunday, October 8th. The event was a lot of fun for students and our community.
Marin Elementary celebrated International Walk and Roll to School Day on Wednesday, October 4th. Students embraced the school spirit, their health, and environmental sustainability by walking to school.
Let's see, Ocean View's Walk and Roll to School Day was on Wednesday, October 4th. This was a great opportunity to celebrate our health, the environment, and our school spirit. Students who walked, biked, scooted, or car pulled to school that day got stickers and a treat.
Marin, Marin's Chalk It Up fundraiser took place on Saturday, October 7th. Students decorated the halls with chalk and raised funds for fine art materials.
Marin's first math night of the year was Wednesday, October 4th, and that was a huge success. It was great to see the community engaged in fun math games and puzzles.
The annual Westbury Nursery Pumpkin Patch will be celebrating the Cornell PTSA again. Pumpkins will be on sale throughout October at Westbury Nursery at 1272 Gilman Street. An amazing 100% of proceeds go to benefit Cornell, so please come by, buy pumpkins, and support our Cornell Coyotes.
The Ocean View Walkathon is coming up on Saturday, October 21st, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The Walkathon itself is 11:15 a.m. to 1:30 p.m.
An opportunity to meet Principal Terry Georgson for coffee is coming up on Friday, October 20th, from 8:45 a.m. to 9:15 a.m. in the Ocean View Staff Lounge.
The 6th grade Halloween party will be on Monday, October 16th, from 5:30 to 6:30 at AMS.
This Friday, October 13th, is a staff development day for the Albany Unified School District.
On next Thursday, October 19th, student school board members and the school board member, Clark, and school member Clark, will be hosting a forum after school in the AHS Courtyard for community members, especially students, to voice their concerns and ideas regarding the new budget restructuring that will take place this year.
In addition, the board is currently working with our superintendent and Mr. Allen Gard in order to make sure that students are up to date and knowledgeable about developments regarding the district budget restructuring.
Great, thank you. Comments or questions? For students. No, that brings us to persons to address the board on matters not on the agenda. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less, and understand that since these matters are not on the agenda, the Brown Act forbids us to discuss them with you. We can ask clarifying questions, and we can refer matters to staff, but otherwise, we can't respond.
Jackie, please make sure the timer and the buzzer is working, please. Thank you.
I only have about 45 minutes of comments to make, so don't, no. I'll keep it short and sweet, just two comments. Firstly, Allen, I wanted to thank you for your, your very prompt response when I was posing questions about energy use. One of the, one of the issues that's come up in the budget discussion has, has, it seems like the emphasis has been quite a bit on loss of service. But through my conversation with Allen, I'm really pleased to see that through the sustainability and design committee, that there's been this real effort to address issues like waste cost, energy costs, and water costs. One thing that I did want to just raise up was that on, it's great to hear that the Albany Middle School annex has funding for the installation of solar. And I just also wanted to ask if, if it hasn't already been considered, how we could possibly access the Prop 39, the $5 billion that is available to help schools go solar. And so I'm hoping that that, that that'll also be considered. On a separate note, in my professional career, I'm a lead head. I do a lot of work around lead poisoning and lead poisoning prevention. And I had sent a question over to facilities, and I haven't received a response yet, so I just wanted to pose a question, which is, have the water fountains been screened for lead? And if not, if there's a, if there's a timeframe for when that may happen. I know there's a lot of discussion in, in the various Bay Area districts about, about having that performed. There was a recent article in the San Jose Mercury News that, that suggested that is statewide, that may take place relatively soon. But I did at least want to pose the question and find out if, if that issue's been considered. So, thank you.
Does Steph know that, or are we going to look into that?
We can look at it also, because we have, we have not filled the position for our supervisor for maintenance and operations, so if you sent an email or left a voicemail message, it probably is there. So, what I would suggest is that if you have future questions, either email them to Allen to me, or we'll make sure that it goes to the right place.
This is an all to you.
You can send them all to me, it's okay. I'm going to give some of them to Allen, so, but yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next.
Hi, I'm Karen DeHart, ATA co-president, and I just have a question. It'll, can be referred to staff. But we have seen, many of us have seen throughout the minutes, reference to a confidential employees group. And I would like to know who constitutes that group? I know the board can't answer, so, anyone on staff?
What I would do, just to make sure that I'm accurate, I'll get that back to you in an email, or I'll have Cynthia get that to you. You want the, the actual names of the positions in the confidential?
Any identification you can give me.
Okay, we'll get that to you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi there, I would just like to read a letter, a letter I wrote, I typed up furiously and sent to my email on the way here. I just wanted to share my experience being a parent of transfer students in the district. I have four daughters in Albany schools. Two at the high school, two just got into Cornell on a transfer. So I want to share that experience. My two oldest daughters started kindergarten at Ocean View back when Madeline Hennings was principal there, so this is a super long time ago. And they got a transfer there because my husband is a 20-year employee of University I volunteered every day when my oldest daughter was in kindergarten, that's not an exaggeration. It was Michael Beer's last year as a kindergarten teacher, the teacher who let students paint his car every year. I was there every day, I did not feel like driving back home to Richmond, so I stayed there three and a half hours every day with my two-year-old daughter. And when the teachers ordered supplies for the classroom, they always ordered something for my toddler, because she was there every day. I also did the lunch cart at the middle school for three years. I've given to school care. I have been involved in Albany schools as much as I could be, and was never once tempted to use my cousin's address on Portland Avenue to get my younger daughters in. I waited patiently for a transfer, it took six years, but my two 4th grade girls were just accepted to Cornell. And I was going to ask the board to, my voice is wavering because I'm super nervous. Thank you. I would like to ask you to maybe think about your policy on siblings and clarify it, because I requested that my two daughters be placed together at Cornell, simply because one of my daughters has auditory processing disorder, she's on the autism spectrum, and she's been in class with her one-year younger sister for the last five years. They've been in the same class at the school where I teach. So it was very, not only were we happy to get the transfer, like I said, we've been waiting patiently for it for six years, but it was hard for them because they were leaving not only the group of friends that they had and each other, but the school where mommy works. And this was finally the year, because I've always taught upper grade, where they run a schedule, they could come into my classroom at recess and kind of see me around school. I was asked by the secretary at Cornell to write a letter explaining why I wanted my kids together. I did so. And then I was told by the principal that she could not honor that request because she saw no evidence why it would be beneficial to my girls. And I'm getting a little bit away from the letter now. My husband and I had a meeting with her. We were begging, literally begging, I will beg for my kids, I will go to war for my kids, I will do anything for my kids, for them to be placed in the same class, any class. I didn't request a teacher, there's four 4th grades at Cornell. I said, can they just be together? And I was told, I'm sorry, I was told in a very rude way that I needed to leave, there was nothing more that she could do for me, and that there was a policy against siblings, but I was asked by the secretary to write a letter explaining why I wanted my two girls together. I was humiliated, I was disrespected, and I think as educators, we honor parent requests as long as they're reasonable. That's what we do, that's good karma. And we're nurturing people, and I feel like the way I was treated at Cornell was, not only was it disrespecting my humanity and my family's, but it made me feel powerless and sad. And I hope that what I'm saying here doesn't come back to haunt my kids in any way, but I feel like there needs to be a policy if I'm asked to write a letter, and I'm at the point where I'm begging for my kids just to be in the same class, and then I'm told there's no policy, they can't be together, I won't honor that. I just feel like something needs to be done. I feel like as a mom, I know what's best for my kids, and I'm not asking for something crazy. I know I have had crazy parents before of my students, that's not who I am, and again, I wasn't asking for anything unreasonable. Thank you, and I'm sorry I went over.
Thanks, can Steph look into this? Okay, Steph will look into this and get back to you. We don't have a Director of Student Services right now, but someone will take it on.
Are you, are we sure that we have contact information to get back to this parent?
If we have a speaker slip, or if you didn't fill out a speaker, we have a speaker slip, thank you.
Good, thank you. Okay, anyone else want to address the board on matters not on the agenda? We have a staff report, Promoting Safe, Supportive, and Collaborative Environments for All Students and Staff.
Thank you, and I'm actually going to go up to the dais, because I think that's where the presentation is. On behalf of Marie Williams, I thank you. Marie's actually in training tonight, and so I told her that I would do the, the weekly spotlight for promoting safe, supportive, and collaborative environments for all students and staff. And what I wanted to share with, with you and the, the community today is that over the summer, Principal Deborah Brill from the middle school, Camille Fisher, a teacher, and I attended the Seeking Educational Equity and Diversity Training through the National Seed Project. And it was a seven-day intensive training around equity and diversity and oppression. And this training was paid for by a grant that two superintendents and I wrote with the county through the Stewart Foundation. I really appreciate the Stewart Foundation, as well as the Stanford Scope Project, because it was through their funding that we were able to get this training at very, very little cost to the district. But I'm sharing this today because one of the things that we learned at this training is that when you talk about equity and diversity, it is much more than diversity work. This is life work. It's hard work, and it is hard work. And this was actually shared by a, a high school teacher. And so, part of the training actually required a commitment on the three of us parts to bring information back and start to engage in conversation with our district and with our school communities, to start talking about at a much deeper level, issues of equity, diversity, and oppression. And so I, I want to read a quote, because I think it's, it's important from the, this from the National Seed Project, but it is, it is what we really believe. And that is, our goal is to create conversational communities to drive personal, organizational, and societal change toward greater equity and diversity. Curricula, teaching methods, and workplace practices that are gender fair, multiculturally equitable, socioeconomically aware, and globally informed create the most effective environments for all people to learn and flourish. Further, when we are put at the center of our own processes of growth and development, we are better able to put the growth and development of young people and colleagues at the center of our classroom, our communities, and our work, workplaces. And so, what I would like to share with you, so I want to share a little bit of what we've been doing since the training in July. Our district leadership team, which is our district and site administrators, have been working for the past three years on issues of what does equity look like in Albany. And that took a lot of discussing. You think it wouldn't take much time, but it did. A lot of deep thoughtful conversations happened, and continue to happen. We then started to focus on mathematics and equity, because we believe that mathematics many times is the gatekeeper to college and career. This year, we're working on social emotion learning and social justice competencies. And that took a lot of work. It took months of work from our leadership team to, to use these, and, and we're very grateful to the Oakland Unified School District, who has done a lot of this work, and we use some of their work as a model. So we meet regularly, and we learn about ourselves, we interact with each other, we have very courageous conversations, and we push each other's thinking. And we learn from the lessons of our own lives, as well as what we're reading. So, we're trying our very best, as we engage in these conversations, to turn oppression and privilege into agency and action. We want to interrupt issues of inequity and bias and racism. And we really want to explore our own experiences with topics related to equity, and how we can use this experience to dismantle these systems of oppression. And this work takes time. We know this work is going to be lifelong work for us, both personally in our lives, as well as in this district. So, in addition, Deborah Brill and Camille Fisher are forming what is called a District-Wide Seeking Educational Equity and Diversity Group, okay? And they've put out an invitation to staff, and I, I believe we have about 30 staff members from across the district, not just our certificated, certificated classified folks can come together and have these monthly meetings so they can explore their own experiences related to issues of equity, and how they can use these experiences and those of others to dismantle systems of oppression. So just to give you a little idea, this is the wheel of oppression that we were, we spent quite a bit of time in our training. And in the last few months, our district leadership team started off discussing issues around gender. Now you would think issues around gender might be a little bit easier to, to discuss than issues around racism, but that is not true. But what we found is that the wheel of oppression, a lot of these all flow into each other. So we, throughout the next year, are going to educate ourselves and each other around these issues of oppression. Now you notice there's a blank little piece of the pie there. And that is because that there are probably issues around another type of oppression that we don't know that we don't know. And we believe that some, you know, throughout these discussions, we may find something or some things that we can put into that spot. So I want to end with these two quotes, because these were very powerful for me when I was going through the training. And that is, we need to engage in conversations about ourselves, about the kind of community we aspire to be, about justice and injustice. And I heard a lot of this from parents over the last few months. And it is our responsibility as educators to ensure that educational equity for all students, regardless of their background, provide access to intellectual and cultural opportunities, and offer continuous and meaningful academic and personal support. And so I hope to be able to come back throughout the year. to be able to come back throughout the year and give you folks an update on what we're learning. But I really want to end with, certainly want to end with, this is really hard work. And, you know, we've got some administrators in the audience who are kind of nodding, that these are conversations that need to happen. And they're difficult conversations, and they're painful conversations sometime. But we, as a leadership team, are willing and able to take those steps and to have those discussions. And that is my report. I'm open to any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Do you have any questions or comments from the board?
Just staff?
Please, let me take questions, comments from the board, and then we'll get to the, thank you.
I just wanted to make the comment that you said that there was around 30 or 35 staff that have stepped up to be involved with this throughout the year and meet together. I think that the ripple effect, as the staff examine this issue, will then flow into their classrooms and into the school and to the students as well. So this is a positive development.
Thank you, Kim. Alarun? Please come up to the mic.
My question was sort of the makeup of that courageous group that came forward, for one. And is there any other outsider or counter perspectives or involvement, like people from the community or whomever, who may not be an educator, but certainly can speak to some of the issues around diversity and inclusion?
So the way that the, they're called seed circles. And the way they work is you have a seed circle of people who volunteer. In this case, this is a circle of staff. And so they will be having these discussions, and they can decide as a circle how they want to bring in information, or if they want to bring in guest speakers. It's really up to them. For the district leadership team, we, let me kind of back up a little bit. We have four district leadership team meetings a month. We have once a week. And some of them have been, I call the logistics, sort of nuts and bolts things you need to talk about to run a district. And when I came on board, we allocated one of those meetings a month to specifically be earmarked for our, we call it our equity work. And we held that to fidelity. You couldn't cancel it. You couldn't not come. It was a commitment that we made. Because of this training, we've now allocated two weeks out of the month, two of our meetings out of the month to do this work. And that is specifically with our leadership team. And we, these are, they're circles, and they're somewhat closed circles. I don't mean to have it to feel exclusionary, but there's a lot of trust that you have to build because you have a lot of these courageous conversations that you've just got to build that trust.
Please come on.
I really, I really appreciate this. Thanks. On that wheel, because I assume that wheel is some combination of driving the conversation and also an outcome of the conversation, is there something about fat shaming in there? Because I know that that's happening in some of the schools. Is that what that sizesm thing was? Or what's hap, was that part of the conversation in any way?
So far, it's not been a part of the conversation because we've just started these. I can share with you, and I'll talk about in broad brushstrokes, because even the train that we went to have had a common agreement of confidentiality. But we did talk about body and about body image. And the training was seven days. It was very intensive. So you actually had to stay overnight in a high school dormitory. I just want you to sit with that for a second, a high school dormitory. And we started at about 7:00 in the morning, and we ended at like 10:00 o'clock at night because of the work that we were doing. We did cover some of these, not all of them. The wheel is there as a guide for what people can use. And there are many, many other documents and resources that the National Seed Project does provide to people that attend the training. So we haven't covered all those. We've just begun.
Karen, did you want to?
I just have a comment, I guess, and then a question. And I've worked with CTA Human Rights Group, and we have infused some of the work on the unconscious bias into the high school site. And it was very successful, the little bit that we had. So my concern is that a lot of what we are doing here must be ongoing, must be consistent work in order to create systemic change throughout the district, at all the sites, with teachers, students, parents, the community. So as I see it, this must be included in the LCAP. Are you having discussions about how that can be included in the LCAP so that there is a serious agendized item that is continuous, ongoing work that the district does?
Yes. I could clarify very, very quickly, because I think my time is running out. We do have embedded in our LCAP, and I think it's in 3.2.1, that talks about earmarking some money for the work that we're doing around equity and diversity, especially with the Albany coming together. But when the LCAP committee reconvenes and we start looking at the LCAP for subsequent years, those topics around equity and diversity and professional development can definitely come to the forefront. So I, this is a great time to invite people who want to be on the LCAP committee to please do so.
Thanks. Anyone else? Thank you. Okay, we have a variety of review and action items here. The first one is a public hearing on a resolution of sufficiency of instructional materials. So I hereby open the public hearing. We have some background information on this.
Give me one second, please.
Page 47 of the, of the agenda.
It's probably on my agenda. Hold on. I had it all printed out in order for me to look at this.
That's the problem with paper.
Okay, thank you. Purpose of this is for the Albany Unified School District Board of Education to open a public hearing regarding the sufficiency of textbooks and instructional materials. This is an annual public hearing that we are required to do. And so, school site principals have submitted documentation regarding the inventory and the availability of California State Board of Education adopted or locally adopted standards-aligned textbooks and/or instructional materials that are aligned to the California state standards. The district currently has records indicating that state board adopted standards-aligned textbooks and materials were adopted and purchased by the district in all the required areas.
Okay, thanks. So the resolution is fairly extensive. It does list all of the textbooks involved, and it states that sufficient textbooks or instructional materials were provided to each student in each of these categories. So do we have any comments or questions from the board? Vivian?
So just speaking on, in terms of sufficiency of textbooks and instructional materials. So I'm in the AP Calculus class, and I know in my case, we don't have enough textbooks to work both at school and at home. So we have one set of textbook that we're supposed to bring back and forth to school. And while I realize that is, you know, it does work, I think that, especially with the quality of textbooks degrading over time through the hands of students, I think we should look into maybe taking inventory of the textbooks and starting to see in which areas can we replace textbooks or maybe get more.
Okay.
I will have Marie Williams, who is our Director of Curriculum Instruction Assessment, look into this.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this?
Paul?
Kim?
We approved Wildflower last spring for 7th grade reading, but I didn't see that in this list under the 7th grade core novels. Sorry, I didn't, I didn't notice that in time to get that to staff as a question. But if you just want to make a note of that, might be worth checking on.
Can you tell me the name of it? It's the?
Wildflower.
Wildflower for 7th?
Yes, for 7th.
7th grade.
Was that a core novel, or?
I believe it was. Peter Parente was asking us to approve the purchase for every 7th grader.
Your question is, was it ordered and delivered?
I just think it should be a part of this list.
Oh, okay.
It's about the young Californian who was interred during World War II was the storyline of that novel. Wildflower, yeah.
Okay. So Steph, look into that and update this resolution if it in fact should be in there?
I will, I will ask Marie.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing. Karen, did you want to say something? Before we close again? Sure, please. Hope you're counting your 10,000 steps here.
Well, I don't have my phone on me. I'm going to put on my teacher's hat and ask you what the process is for the adoption and like new adoption cycles. So my memory tells me that when I kind of started in Albany, and maybe for the first 10 years, there was this adoption cycle we went through. And let's say, social studies at the high school got a particular year every seven years. And we would sit in a room, all of us together, and we would review for all our courses, the textbooks. And then we would give to the board a recommendation, and you would either accept or reject it. So we are working now with world history textbooks that were copyrighted in 1999. And don't get me wrong, I love that book, Mahima. But it is dated. American Odyssey for US History is equally as old. Government is fairly new because we did have some, some agreement or some mandate to go ahead and get those books. And like, so you get my, what I'm trying to say is, so a lot of our books are really old. So if it's like necessary instructional materials and whatnot, how does that process work by the state to ensure that we have updated materials? Thank you.
Do we know?
Alan can answer the question.
I, be part of the question? So I remember prior to the local control funding formula being implemented, the state would provide a specific grant to school districts for instructional materials. The, I forgot what the name of the grant was. But it was essentially aligned with the state adopting new standards. And so when the state would adopt new standards, then they would allocate a certain amount of money for each school district. And then that I think is, is how that process occurred, where they would go to the department heads and figure out what materials to adopt. Since then, the state has done away with many of the specific grants and categorical programs. And so for the second part of the question on how do we address it, we would need to work with Marie Williams on what the process is.
So, okay, so you'll get back to me, or we'll discuss it some further point?
Yes.
I will, actually, I will have Marie send it to you. And then if we want to discuss it further, we can also discuss it at our next roundtable meeting. Be a great agenda item.
Can you include that in your update, your Friday update to the board?
Update to the board, yep.
Thank you. Good. Any other comments or questions before we close the public hearing? Okay, public hearing is closed. We need a motion to pass the resolution.
I motion to pass the resolution.
We have a second.
I second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, we're bringing back for second reading, Board Bylaw 9102, Board Member Electronic Communications.
Yes, thank you. Bringing this back. And Jacob, if you can put that up on the screen, please. The board asked me to bring this back as a review and action item. And I do believe there was one or two areas that the board wanted to continue to discuss. And I did have this appearance on red. And is this the actual Word document that's open? Or is it, okay.
Okay, so comments from the board?
Yeah, I made my opinion pretty clear about this last time. You know, it's come up a couple of times. And just because it was recommended by CSBA doesn't give it any extra weight to me. I think it's fine the way it is. CSBA, which is the California School Board Association, they also supported legislation for a 17% school reserve, which takes much-needed funds away from the classrooms. So just because CSBA recommends something, that it doesn't give that much weight to me. I think it's fine the way it is.
Okay, thank you, Jacob. My personal opinion, I've read the original wording, which I think was okay, but a little bit hard to read. And the new wording is more concise. I'm happy keeping with the new wording, just for myself. I'd just as soon go with the new wording, just because it's more concise and a little easier to understand. That's it. That's just my opinion. Anyone else want to comment? Then we need a motion on the bylaw. And I think the motion should specify whether you want to approve it with the old wording in this first paragraph or the new wording in the first paragraph. Does anyone care to make a motion?
Well, there's changes at the end too, right?
Yes. Do you want to discuss those?
No, I mean, are you making two different motions, or you?
No, the motion would be that, because nobody seems to have contested any of the other changes, the motion would be to accept all the changes, or to accept all the changes except the changes in the first paragraph. One motion or another. Does anybody want to make a motion? I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve this with all the changes recommended. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no?
No.
Okay, will the minutes please record that Jacob voted no on this? And did you want to state a reason for the minutes? Just that you don't?
Yeah, there's just so much stuff going on now with the budgets and all that stuff that we, the fact that we're talking about this, I think is just unnecessary.
Thank you.
So for the, just for the minutes, for the reason for the no vote, I just want to make sure that we're concise, that this is an unnecessary?
Change?
Change.
In my opinion, yes.
Okay, thank you. So this is 3 to 1 with one absence and with advisory votes in favor from the two student board members. If the minutes can record that.
So the two advisory votes for the board members were the ayes?
Yes.
Thank you.
I believe that's right. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. This brings us to guaranteed maximum price approval with Rodan Builders.
And I'm going to turn this over to Alan Gard, who will introduce this topic.
Thank you, Superintendent Williams. This is a project that has been in the works for almost three years. If we wait two more weeks, then we can say it's been three years. The project first began when the facility's master plan was adopted in 2014. And we approved a contract with WLC Architects to develop a committee to look at how do we address the San Gabriel site. Through many meetings with community members, stakeholders, teachers, principals, staff, and various committees, we were able to come up with a project that everybody agreed with. And this is essentially the same slides that were, that were shared in the August update of the middle school and its project. Just, I'll just kind of go over some of the items again and connect it to what was in the board packet. the board packet. And so if anyone has not heard, the Albany Middle School won the U.S. Department of Education National Blue Ribbon Award. So. This is a site plan of the middle school annex that would be located across the street from the main campus. The buildings on the bottom are two-story. The one to the left is one-story, which is a drama theater. And then the two classrooms up above are one-story. This is a, another view of the middle school annex. The contract that's being brought forward notes that we're able to reduce the contract by just over a million dollars compared to what was approved in February. The reason for that is to get it back in the project budget as well as, I'm going to highlight some of the major changes. So one of the changes was through very challenging discussions, we decided that we would hold off on building the culinary arts room for now. We also reduced some of the roof heights as well as reduce the elevation of the drama classroom. We are also, one of the potential adds, or one of the adds that will be brought forward in a future contract later in the calendar year would be the addition of solar panels for the middle school annex. This, the solar panels would be paid for by the Proposition 39 state funding that was previously mentioned at the, in the comments. And, and so we wouldn't have local bonds paying for the solar panels. One of the things I also want to bring to everyone's attention is we're working very closely with the city regarding potential work that could be needed for the middle school annex, looking at sidewalk repairs, crosswalks. And specifically, there's two trees that are located at those two circles. We, the one on the bottom, we would need to relocate or remove in order to provide a clear pathway and driveway for the drama theater and the rest of the campus. The large circle notes a larger tree that we're working with the city arborist on, on how to address because we want to provide clear visibility for students and pedestrians as they walk through the middle school annex. We also want that area to be a place where they can congregate. So when we're working with the city, we are going to utilize bay-friendly landscaping principles as well as utilize a list of approved plants and trees from the city to ensure that we're all on the same page. One thing I forgot to mention is we are also adding many trees along the neighbor line. Two reasons would be to help protect views as well as, you know, just ensure that we have trees and we're being mindful of the environment. One of the other items that helped with the budget was we were working with Albany Middle School teachers on the classrooms. So this was the original design where it didn't have many windows. There was a lot of casework, cabinetry. And we worked with the teachers to really understand what they wanted. They wanted more windows and they also wanted to have casework that's similar to their current classrooms and to what they would utilize. So the windows was a increased cost, but through the reduction of the casework that was originally planned, that netted an overall savings. And so we submitted the first design plans to the Division of State Architect in, I think it was July. We're expecting DSA approval in two weeks. We also submitted the design plans for the buildings to the Division of State Architect and anticipate approval in early December. We're looking at very early November to begin construction. And so right now, what we're doing is we have, we have in progress the layout to add student and staff bike racks to the main campus to help facilitate, you know, a reduction of cars long-term, but then also short-term reducing cars during construction. And that would be in place prior to construction. We're also working with, oh, and I also want to thank the Albany Strollers and Rollers for their expertise in helping us design a layout that works best. The, we're also working with the Design Assign in Albany to help create a sign that'll help announce expectations for the middle school annex. And we anticipate that we would be substantially complete by December 2018.
Thank you, Alan. Questions or comments? From the public? Kim?
I just want to congratulate you, Alan, for having overseen such a complex process involving so much input from different stakeholder groups. In terms of the initial plans, I thought those were good. All of the refinements that have come later and the work with the AMS teachers to see what they really need in the classroom, what will benefit them and make it a fine educational environment. It's just so impressive. I'm very pleased to be able to vote on this issue.
Thank you, Mahima.
I was just curious, so construction will be taking place during the school year?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And so just a little bit on that is, we would have construction meetings every week that looks at work that's planned for the week, but also for the month and the following six weeks. And so we would be working very closely with the site principal, Deborah Brill, on expectations as well as any flexibility construction would have on tailoring noise levels to student needs.
Thank you. Okay, just to be clear, we already have an agreement, Rodan Builders, that has been approved by the board. So this is an amendment for their services to reduce the total cost by a little over $1 million, which personally I think is a great idea. So with that, that's what we will be voting on, is the amendment to an already approved contract. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve this amendment.
Do we have a second?
I second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Thank you, passes. This brings us to an independent contractor agreement with A3 Geo for geotechnical engineering.
Thank you. I will also turn this over to Alan Gard, who will introduce this item.
Thank you Superintendent Williams. We're bringing forward a contract with A3 Geo. This is to be the geotechnical engineer of record for the Albany Middle School Annex project. This is a, a role that's required by the Division of State Architect in order to move forward with the project for construction. We've worked with A3 Geo in the past to assess the site and they're a local firm and listen to work with.
Thanks. So this, they will be the?
Geotechnical engineer of record.
Engineer of record. Does that mean they can hire another geotechnical engineer, but they're the ones who are responsible? What does that mean, that they're the engineer of record?
So that means they hold, they hold position and liability with the Division of State Architect. So if 10, 20 years from now, there's a question with the Division of State Architect on a specific project related to, related to earth or the, or the site, then they know to contact this firm in order to get details. If there's a?
Great, thank you. Okay, do we have any questions or comments on this? Do we have a motion?
I move we approve the contract.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Independent contract agreement with CAS Inspection Incorporated for Inspector of Record Services.
I'm going to let Alan continue with this item as well.
Thank you Superintendent Williams. This is to bring forward a contract with CAS Inspections to be the inspector of record for the Albany Middle School Annex project. This is also a role that's required by the Division of State Architect prior to construction. This is an important role where they would be on-site most of the time. They, the contract spans 15 months and they would be on-site full-time during construction. And similar to the geotechnical engineer of record, they would be the inspector of record where they would need to sign off on all construction invoices during construction. They would inspect the, the work that's being done and ensure that the work is in compliance with Division of State Architect regulation.
Okay, when all the work is done, somebody has to apply for final DSA approval. Who does that? Is that Rodan Builders or is that this firm?
That is, that is Rodan Builders.
Great, thank you. Any questions, comments from the board? From the public? Do we have a motion?
I motion to approve this contract.
Do we have a second?
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Terrific. Okay, that's all of our review and action items. We next have an hour set for a discussion of district goals. I'd like to take about a five-minute break before we do that. So we'll be back here at about one minute after eight. And the agenda is U S D District Goals.
Thank you President Black trustees and student board members. So the purpose of district goal setting is to provide the board and staff a framework from which to place greater emphasis on identified areas within the strategic plan as well as the local accountability plan, excuse me, local control accountability plan. It also helps to communicate to the public the major points of emphasis in our coming years, align our district's budget to district goals, as well as to hold all affected parties accountable for identified district goals. And so we have an hour open for this discussion. And I turn it over to our board president.
So we have an hour for this discussion. It's a review and discussion item. I'm hoping that we will come up with a general agreement on three to five district goals. But if we don't, we'll just cut it off after an hour because it's not an action item. The purpose of this is just the, the board, one of the major functions of the board is to provide direction to the district. And by setting goals, the board can just state what it thinks are important things for the district to be working on for the year. So with that, I just want to open it up to discussion. If people have thought about this, have ideas of? If people have thought about this, have ideas of what kinds of things they want to do for the year. Let's have at it. Why don't we just go down the line and each person can say, well, feel welcome to say you don't have any specifics and pass it on to the next person, but we'll just give everyone a chance. Let's start with Mahima.
So at our first retreat meeting, we talked about a lot of issues and one thing that I really wanted to prioritize was, if I can find it, the vision plan and implementation of board policy. So one of the things that we talked about briefly was the transition from middle school to high school. And we've talked about this in a lot of different dynamics, especially, you know, with math transitioning and also just student orientations running smoother. The other thing that I was really concerned about was making sure that students have opportunities outside the classroom to learn and explore and experience, like experimental, experimen- experimental...
Experiential.
Experiential, that's the word I was looking for. Experiential learning. So we've talked briefly about maybe working with UC Berkeley to provide more opportunities, experiencing the career and internship, help-out office, but also just making sure that with the programs we implement, like the expansion of homework labs in the high school and expanding the flex office, we can get the data from these programs and see the action that's really taking place in the classrooms and making sure that we take that data and we make impactful change based on it. So we talked about the LCAP, we talked about the Healthy Kids Survey, we also talked about potentially getting anecdotal data from students, but...
Thank you.
So to paraphrase the mission statement, AOC is committed to creating comprehensive learning opportunities and addressing the individual needs of each student. And I think that since this is one of our main goals, I think that one of the best ways we can do that is by informing the student and having an informed student body. And when I was sitting for, during the school board interview, they asked what did I want to do? And one of my main goals was to create a sort of communication link between the school board and the student body, so the student body would be informed about the school board decisions and policy that was made, as well as able to, as well as provide a way for the school board, I mean, sorry, excuse me, the student body to voice their concerns to the school board. And that way, we could create a very cooperative partnership between the students that we serve and the school board to make sure that student concerns are heard out, as well as school board policy is made known to the students, so that way they can, I guess, navigate high school and all the other schools better.
Thank you.
I'm thinking about what both of our student board members said and how interesting some of those possibilities are. I have been greatly interested in communication, improving communication with the parent community and with the broader community and ways we could do that. I'm happy to say that I'm on the website, the district website redesign committee, so that, some of that work is going forward. I think this year, we really need to focus on actions that we take that will have an impact, but yet will be cost-neutral. It's very important for me to stay cost-neutral if we're going to have to talk about making cuts, you know, throughout the district. So when I look at the, you know, all of the items on our list, one thing that pops out to me is the emergency protocols question. I know that the schools have, you know, like an emergency evacuation plan or, you know, a stay safe in shelter, those sorts of plans, but I think that we don't have something at a different sort of emergency process set up for how the board and the district administration will help govern the district in times of emergency. And I think that's something that we should look at and we should get in place because if an emergency does happen, we want to be able to go directly to a process that we have already established. I also think that we've talked about high school graduation requirements and that's another thing that we can sort of settle in and discuss that's budget-neutral. I've made, I've made my position quite clear, I think, in that I think that the district should adopt a later morning start time for our secondary schools. And I would like to see us begin to look at that, whether the state adopts the Senate Bill 328 or not in their next legislative session. I do think that that's coming down the road and within a few years, we will be asked just on the basis of what, of the recommendations from the medical community, that this is something that needs to happen, that we need to have an 8:30 start time. So my personal preference would be for us to sort of get ahead of the ball and start looking at what it would take to implement that.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's it on my end.
Thanks, Kim. Jacob?
Yeah, I really appreciated us all getting together. I think it was a very productive meeting. And the thing that I was talking about a lot was the roles and responsibilities of the board and the individual board members. I had stated that, you know, sometimes it's being told to us that we're not supposed to micromanage, but to me, that's completely different than not being involved in the decisions, you know? On every day-to-day basis, of course, we can't be involved, but if there's big things that need to be talked about, there's a lot of knowledge on this board, like I said before, and I think you guys aren't tapping into it. I think a lot of times, staff just kind of thinks they know what's best without even consulting us, you know? It might be nice if you consult us and we might say, yeah, that's a great idea and kind of validate what you're thinking. Also, I also believe that we should be more of a team. I've also been heard it's a governance team, but I don't really feel that it's much of a team when decisions are kind of made and then it's like, okay, well, we want you to approve this now, you know? That's not what I look at as far as teamwork. So that's the main thing that I would look for as far as serving our students and the community the best we can for all of us to be involved. The board members up here who were elected by the public, you know? People call us and ask us and, you know, sometimes when stuff doesn't go right, they assume that the board made those decisions. And in fact, a lot of times, we didn't, you know? So that's the main thing I'm advocating for.
Thanks. Ross?
Two big things, and the first one has two parts. And the first one is somewhat informed by a conversation I just had today with a parent who was wandering by my house as I was wandering in the garden. And I asked her how, had she responded to the survey? She hadn't. And how were her kids? And she says, well, my freshman is now at St. Mary's. And this is a parent who was heavily involved in PTA activities and really is committed to the district and said, yeah, in anticipation of the high school and budget cuts, et cetera, they made the plan to go to St. Mary's. So I think we're going to see an awful lot of people making decisions based on the fact that we are going to be in a time of declining budgets and trying to make the best of the education for their children. So I would say we need to have better integration with the outside world. That means more tolerance, the people who say, I'd love to have my kid at Albany High, if only I could also get the kid a class at BCC and have it on his transcript, get an online class on his transcript, if that's possible per ed code, be more flexible than we are because we're going to lose them and, and I'm thinking, you know, across a range of things, more flexibility for any kid. I mean, I've talked, since I joined the board, about finding one's fit. And from my perspective, if you can be at Albany and be happy that you've satisfied all of the things you need, whether that's an outside class, whether that's the flexibility that someone can grant with a mere waiver, that would be great. So looking at our flexibility to cope with the outside world, and the outside world is getting richer and richer in some ways for education, thinking things like online courses. Related, I think we're going to need to be as flexible as possible with other outside parties, including volunteers and sponsors. We don't have a lot of outside investors, say, that Berkeley has for being a large city, that San Francisco has got with Silicon Valley, you know? When the company comes in and buys a thousand iPads for SFUSD because they're the neighbors. We don't have such neighbors, but I think we could court more outside parties than we do and make it easy and not hard for volunteers to work with the schools, to go on field trips, to supplement what we do in the classroom. It got painful as a parent a couple of years back when driving on field trips suddenly became this thing that took you months to negotiate with the DMV and the fingerprinting and all of that. How best to do that, I don't know. Talk with folks outside the district who are interested in volunteers. I think it could absolutely be something like a school care or an AEF where we seek, you know, try to arrange that some outside organization gets the funding to fund a position for volunteer coordinator and do that in partnership with the district. But there's a lot of resources out there in the form of people that I don't think we tap as well as we might. And then the second big one is, I would love to see us over the coming year actually have a facility strategy and a real validated plan for what happens next. I'm on the committee with Kim that's looking at the, you know, how do we implement the construction of future schools? And I think there's an awful lot that we won't get to in the few meetings we will have and an awful lot that will require an awful lot of input from a lot of other parties. There is bond money allocated to rent school space, but if we're going to, say, bus kids to a school space, that comes out of the general fund. If we're going to bus kids to another town, I'd really love to have the community weigh in on whether or not they think that's a good idea, schlepping three miles or five miles. If we're going to have an alternative that is double shifting at a school, that might have worked 20 years ago when you had one parent working, one parent at home. Mom or dad would catch the kid whenever the kid came home. But now if you've got two working parents, finding out your kid will need to go in the afternoon until evening or from 7:00 AM until 1:00 or something, that may not work these days. We really ought to have that dialogue and I think we talked about having it shortly after the bonds were issued. So I'd really love to have that bigger picture issue of can you get there from here? I think it's a bigger issue than the committee that I'm on that was the follow-on to the master plan and I wouldn't mind seeing us this year address that because as long as it's taken with the San Gabriel Annex, we're running a year behind our original expectations on that. Presumably, we're going to get to one of those elementary schools, maybe even before I would be off the board if I ran for reelection. I don't know. It's a while out, but it's no better time than the future to start thinking about all of the many pieces that have to get moved around to get there.
Thanks, Russ. So I'm trying to look for common threads here. Let me say quickly, one thing that I've been thinking a lot about and I heard echoed in various ways in several people's comments, has to do with high school graduation requirements linked very closely with opportunities outside the classroom. Because to my way of thinking, we are graduating kids from high school who have Ds in required classes. And I don't think I'd find many teachers who would agree that a D means that they have mastered the minimum requirements for that class. So if we've agreed what minimum requirements are and that those classes should be required for graduation, then graduating a kid with a D in the class is saying, we really didn't mean it. And UC and CSU don't accept those grades. So I think we should be looking for ways to help those kids do better. I don't mean that we should not graduate them and I don't mean that we should just give Cs to kids because we're not going to give Ds anymore. I think that we need to find a way to help every kid succeed, like it says in our mission statement. And outside opportunities are one of those things we need to look at. Intervention, I think is, I'm not, you know, I'm not the educational expert here, but when you say intervention, that sounds like, okay, I'm taking the kid out of the class and I'm doing something special with them, rather than having the support within the class and the opportunities within the school in general. So we have a director of alternative education and I think we need to build on that. And this is not something we're going to achieve in a year, but I'm hoping that it's something that we can start working on. And I did hear from several people that they want to look at alternatives outside of the classroom. And I think that's a big part of that. The other thing that nobody mentioned, and I'm going to, since I've only got one more year left on the board before I'm termed out, so that doesn't give people too much time to string me up. We are looking at $3 million to balance our budget. Spending down the reserve won't balance the budget, it'll just delay the time at which we need to make those cuts. But it doesn't necessarily have to be $3 million of cuts if we can identify another source of income. And under California law, the only other source of income that school districts have at their disposal is parcel taxes. We just passed a couple of very large bond measures and the public is feeling that in their pocketbooks, but we also have a lot of support from the public for our schools. And if we could make up some of that difference so that we'd never had to make $3 million in cuts, we would save programs, we would save teachers' jobs, we would keep class sizes more where we want them. So I think, I don't think it's too early to start that conversation. We don't need to pass the parcel tax this year, but I think it's not too early to start talking about it because as long as we don't talk about it, there's no chance it'll happen. So those are two things that I wanted to...
Related, when does the existing parcel tax end?
The one that we'll need to replace, when does that expire?
The final school year that we would have the parcel tax, Measure LL parcel taxes is 2020-21.
Okay. And how much money does that one bring in?
That provides $1.4 million.
Okay.
Measure J is a permanent parcel tax, which provides just over $4 million. And so we would potentially be looking at 2020-20 to ensure that there's no disruption in parcel tax funding.
Okay, so that's coming up. Jacob?
Just a little more clarification on your saying that no matter what, we need to cut 3 million. I want to make sure I'm understanding everything properly. Last time when we sent the resolution out, we targeted 1.15 million, which will show a 3% reserve a few years out. The chart that was presented by Alan with the 3 million cut showed it being a 9% reserve. So I'm not quite understanding why it has to be a 3% reserve, I mean, a $3 million cut.
Okay, well...
If we are willing to take a 3% reserve. Because the way you're explaining it is like, no matter what, it has to be 3 million. So tell me where I'm wrong.
Ross, you want to give that a shot?
So the answer is in where it leaves us at the end of that period. So if we make a one and a half million dollar cut approximately, and at the end of three years, we have 3%, we are still deficit spending and a year after that, we'll have zero. So we'll have to make cuts somewhere.
Right, but it sounded like we have to make 3 million now.
We have to make, so we have to make roughly $3 million in cuts before...
Three years out.
Before three years out. And if we make them earlier, we end up with a higher reserve. And if we make them later, stagger them, et cetera, we end up with a lower reserve. And if we make them later, stagger them, et cetera, we end up with a lower reserve. But until and unless we make all of those cuts to the total operating budget.
Or pass a parcel tax.
Or pass a parcel tax, increase revenues somehow. And if revenues stay the same, until we make those cuts, those cumulative cuts, we will be continuing to go down. And if we make them later, because we've spent a little more in the current years, then we will end up drawing down that reserve.
Isn't that what it's for?
Well, the board has previously said what we want is a 9% reserve because the reserve allows us the flexibility of withstanding the state, turning around and not paying us for a month, et cetera. We are required to have a 3% reserve, absolutely.
And as you pointed out earlier, that CSBA recommends a 17% reserve.
Which is ridiculous, you know?
Well, they don't think so.
Right, but I mean, at one point, we're going to have to make a decision if we value our reserve over programs and people's jobs. Because if they are going to lose their jobs eventually down the road, wouldn't you want to lose your job three years down the road than right now?
That's a decision the board's going to have to make, that's right.
Well, can I make a motion that we put something on the agenda where we address the 9% reserve?
Yes, of course you can make that motion. Does someone else want to second that?
I agree that we need to address that. I am, I am not sure when we need to address that. I would like to get some information back from the budget priorities process before we try to address that. So I, you know, yes, I think we need to, we need to deal with that as a board this year, this school year. But I would, I would rather have the information come back from budget priorities and get that, you know, reviewed by the committee that we're going to talk about later tonight, and then have it come to the board and have more public discussion about that. And then after that, so I think after, after the December break, we'll be in a more informed position to look at the, at the reserve level. So, you know, I'm happy to second it, but I, I wouldn't want to see it on our agenda until January or later.
Okay. So put that on your calendar for the agenda committee?
Just give me one second. So I have a Jacob motioning to place a 9% reserve on a future board agenda, and Kim's willing to second that.
As long as it's not after we get the report from the budget committee?
Okay.
Is that acceptable, Jacob?
When are we getting that report back?
The first report would be at the December 5th school board meeting.
So then, do we have a December 19th school board meeting?
We have one meeting in December because of the winter break, and then there are two meetings in January.
So I would, if we're waiting for that report, which is going to come on December 5th, then I would say the next possible meeting, which would be January, the first one in January.
Okay, so for clarification, Member Clark is making a motion to place a 9% reserve on the first January board meeting. Is that correct?
Do you second that, Kim?
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay. So that's what's required to put it on the agenda, is two board members? Sure, please come up to the mic.
So I'd like to get Karen DeHart, teacher and ATA co-president. I'd like to get clarification from the minutes that were revised for the September 12th meeting, board meeting, where it states, Member Clark started, stated that he did not believe we need a 9% reserve. The board also agreed that the target amount to frame the budget priority discussions will be at least an annual ongoing expenditure reduction of 1.15 mil effective 2018-19 to meet the state's minimum reserve requirement.
Oh, somebody made her.
No, no, no.
Has to change that word. That wording is wrong.
Oh, is it?
Because it's not annual reduction of 1.1 million dollars. It's a 1.1 million dollar reduction ongoing.
Do the changes reflect?
Right, so annual ongoing.
It's not an annual.
Reduction would imply at 3% reserve, 1.15 million continuously every year.
It's 1.15 million cut from the budget, that's a permanent cut, not 1.15 million and the next year, an additional 1.15 million.
So then that would need to be changed because this is, yeah, really.
That is misworded, that's right. And somebody actually said at the last board meeting to clarify that, I believe it was Charlie, and that should be in the minutes, so we'll have to fix it.
So we are to understand in the community that it would be a one-time reduction. If we were to retain the 9% reserve, what would that one-time reduction be that is not ongoing?
Okay, so here's the, here's the clarification. We are spending $3 million, approximately $3 million more per year than we are taking in.
Okay.
Okay, in order to stabilize the budget, we need to make $3 million in cuts. We don't need to make $3 million in cuts today because we do have a reserve. But before the reserve runs out, we need to make $3 million in cuts or replace some of that money some other way. Making 1.15 million dollars in cuts will not stabilize the budget. It will just make it three years before we hit the 3% reserve that's required.
Okay, so I'm just going to comment that there is an assumption out there that these are cuts that are happening annually. And that's a big difference than what you're saying tonight. Okay, so it's a big clarification to, to make, I think. Yeah, thank you.
So for the minutes, Jackie, we need to make sure that these minutes, that that word "annual" comes out of that minutes. And I do remember the last time that that was supposed to have been stricken from those minutes. So we have to make an adjustment, please, so we can reflect it on our minute, on our notes.
Right, if you're not sure about the wording.
I just don't know how anyone would have struck that when this is the first time the board has seen those minutes.
It was in, it was in a description that was given at an earlier meeting.
It was up on the screen.
Yeah, it was up on the screen.
We were talking about it for quite a while.
In the board background, and Charlie pointed out that it was badly worded.
I understand.
Thank you.
Okay, so to get back to the district goals, I'm going to go through these, my notes, and see if we can find three to five goals that everyone agrees on. So Mahima started talking about the AMS to AHS transition. Yes?
Yes.
Please come to the mic if you want to say something.
My name is Olga Miranda. I have a seventh grader at AMS now. Last year it was. One of the things I wanted to mention, and thank you for the clarification because that's how I read it, and that's why I wanted to come down here, because that was not what we discussed at last month's, you know, meeting. And I was very concerned over that because people were concerned over the 3 million and then 1.5. So now that they saw it was an annual thing, everybody's freaking out now over what the hell's going on at the school district. So thank you so much for standing up here and saying that. Now that that's been clarified, I'd like to just ask as a parent that there also be, in all of your capacity as school board members and adjunct, is that there be goals for both LCAP within special ed and English learning development, which is really important, and there are communities that cannot be forgotten and kind of left, will tell you guys what you need. There has to be incredible input from these families. We have the Black Parent Engagement Group, the Latino parent, the Latino Families of Albany, but we also need to be able to take into consideration that there's a whole community with children that have special needs that need to be able to be heard at this table, in this room. And we thought it would have been today. I understand it got moved to the 24th on the town hall. I would also ask that the 24th is not going to be enough time, and I really strongly believe it's going to be more like a marathon meeting, like the one we had last month, where it went on pretty long, because a lot of questions will be asked over how the money is being spent and the transparency over how this is going to be unfolded to the rest of the community. The survey that has gone out, I want to thank people for taking the time to do it. However, it's, I was at the Latino parent families of Albany meeting earlier this month, and there was a lot of concern over, it's only three very general questions, and you're talking to parents that are not acclimated over what the budgetary matters are, what has been spent on, and everybody asks the same question. Is anyone going to show us a number so we can give you an educated opinion in this survey? And even, we asked a few of the middle schoolers that were at our house, a lot of them, what would you, how would you respond to this? And even middle schoolers are telling, how would you spend the money? How much money do we have? Was the first question these kids were asking. And it's very just common sense, but I appreciate the effort that was put into it. But we need to be able to, in order to have a striking and a good engaged conversation as a community and knowing how the budget is going to work that will affect us going forward, it's absolutely fundamental that you show the numbers first so that we can give you that. Thank you.
Thanks. Jacob?
Yeah, I just wanted to add one more thing about the 3 million. I looked back at the chart that Allen presented on the 12th, and for this year, we're deficit spending 2.2. 18 and 19, if we don't change things, we'll be deficit spending 2.4. 19 and 20, if we don't change anything, and we're already going to make cuts, then we get to the 3, it's 3.2. So we're not deficit spending 3 million right now.
Allen?
It's all these projections to go out that we might, you know, we're not deficit spending $3 million now. So this whole talk about it needs to be 3 million, that's if we do absolutely nothing. In three years, we'll be deficit spending 3 million. Right now, we're deficit spending 2.2. So if we make a cut of 1.15, that's a nice chunk of that, and we can slowly do more. I don't, the public is not sure about what's going on, and these decisions have to be made soon, so if we can get it clearer, because we have concerned parents and teachers and me as a board member, to be unclear about what's going on and us throwing out numbers, and it seems like we're not even sure if those are the real hard numbers, it's concerning to me.
Allen, can you?
Sure.
Identify those numbers?
So, oh, sorry. You are correct that for the current year, we're deficit spending by 2.2 million, and then 2.4 the following year, and then 3.2 the year after. The reason we would, it's noting overall $3 million is because by reducing 1.15 for the coming year, we would still be deficit spending next year. And we would need to make another reduction in order to meet the state's minimum reserve in 1920 or in 2021. So long-term, we would need to reduce by $3 million. And that's probably poor wording. Over the next three years, we would need to reduce by $3 million so that we can stabilize the budget at whatever reserve the board chooses. And the board chose that we would reduce by 1.15 million for the coming year to meet the state's minimum reserve.
Right, but, okay, so this year, we're 2.2 deficit spending, right? And we're not making any cuts this year. So I get that. You go to 18, 19, it says 2.4. But that is without the 1.15 cut. So as soon as we make this 1.15 cut, that 2.4 is 1.25. So then to go out to the next year and then still say you're over $3 million, that's not accounting the cut that we made.
You know what? This is not what's agendized. We can't really, according to the Brown Act, be talking about this now because.
It's about budget goals, and you brought it up.
We can talk about the goals, but if you want to clarify.
Goals is to get the financial, you talked about in parcels and getting the financial house in order, this and that, so.
I've talked about talking about parcel taxes as a possible goal. Clarifying what was in Allen's curves is an important discussion that we need to have. We are not going to have the goal discussion if we have that discussion, and that discussion is not what's on the agenda. So anybody who wants to hear that discussion has to know it's agendized so they can come into the board and hear it. We're not being fair to the public if we have that discussion now. It's against the Brown Act.
I disagree. We're talking about the goals. The goal is to get the financial house in order. So then to all of a sudden say we're talking about something we're not supposed to talk about, I.
We can certainly make it one of the board's goals, to get the financial house in order. That's what we're talking about tonight, then we will have made that a goal. And then at another meeting, we'll talk about how to do it. We're not talking about how to do it tonight, we're just saying what the goals will be.
Right, but I've noticed this before. When I talk about something, then all of a sudden, I'm violating the Brown Act. But when you bring it up, and are talking about a parcel tax, and we need to get mobilized and start talking about that, you're not violating the Brown Act. So nobody knew that you were going to talk about that tonight. That was okay. But then for me to talk about something else, I'm violating the Brown Act now.
So let's go back to the goals. Transition from AMS to AHS, math orientation, opportunities outside, opportunities outside the classroom, so you were talking about that. Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to make my proposed goal more focused. So we've talked about the A through G requirements, and I think one thing that's really important moving forward is making sure that we have a common vision for what we, we want of our AHS graduates. Does that mean only career-ready? Does that mean only college-ready? Is there something more? And if we're going to be talking about experiential learning, we should definitely make sure that we know why we want to make these opportunities available for our students. For me personally, the, the vision I have for a typical AHS graduate is being someone who's flexible and adaptable, someone who has the skills, the skill sets to navigate anything that comes towards them, whether it's a career sort of endeavor or a life endeavor or something where they have to shift between two different fields. So if we're going to be talking about making sure that extra opportunities are outside the classroom and also more, more classroom supports are in place, I think it's important that we all have a common vision for what we want for our AHS or Albany Unified School District students.
Great. So I've heard that from you. It's similar to what I talked about. It's closely related to what Ross talked about.
I think I mentioned it too.
I think Kim mentioned graduation requirements as well.
It seems like that that's of great general concern and that should make the cut.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll have to think about exactly how to word it, but I think there's a general agreement that working on what high school graduation requirements would, should be and how we're going to start working towards that should be a goal. Great. Next, that I heard from a couple of people, from Navin and Kim especially, had to do with communication. Navin was talking about cooperative partnership between students and the board. Kim was talking about communications between the board and the rest of the public. And we've had communications, communication as a goal in the past. We need to be careful when, because communication is vague, so we need to try to be specific in what we hope to accomplish in improving communication. And it seems like it's with all stakeholders, because between you, you've mentioned them all. Navin?
Sure, just expand a little on what my idea of communication would be. In terms of the student body, I'd like to see possibly a flyer or something like that. I know that the flyers that I believe Val distributed, in terms of the flyer with the link to the survey itself, that was extremely effective. I actually had a peer of mine bring in four copies for my table today during class. So things like that would be extremely effective, and we had a good discussion about, you know, what was that about? what was that about and how we, me and Mahima are holding a, with Member Clark, a forum in which the students can talk to us about the budget. And so I think things like, such as those flyers would be really effective, especially because when it comes to issues like these that affect students, teachers, and administration greatly, I think it's really important that we have the most informed public in that we can, so that way we can make the most informed and best decisions that affect us all in a positive light.
Kim?
I'd like to ask a question, Navin. So you just mentioned the flyers, but I've also heard you mention, I'm pretty sure at some point, some sort of, I think, social media tool. Could you expand on that a little bit?
Absolutely. So my idea was to tap into the social media, just because students, especially, this is catering more towards the students, a lot of students use social media, and the idea is, instead of creating a form of media that would, you know, be sort of out of the way in terms of like paper stuff like that, they would have to go get it, or they would have to go, you know, find it somewhere. In terms of social media, we would just slip in this information to something they would already be on constantly, and that would be an easy way to constantly update the student body with this information. We could do this through a variety of sources, whether there be a school board run account, or we could do it through the Albany High California account, the school runs. Of course, there are certain issues that we could face, and I would like to go discuss this more in terms of, I don't have, I have a rough idea right now of what it would encompass, but we do, we probably should discuss that a little more before using a new media platform to send out information. That being said, I think social media would be one of the more effective ways to get to the students, but if we weren't to pursue that route, flyers would be the second best way.
And Kim, do you want to add to that in terms of what your, you'd like your communication goals to be?
I would like to make a goal, and I'm not sure this is attainable, of having the district website revamped before the beginning of the next school year. So I would like to start 2018, 19 with a revamped district website.
Okay, so we're looking at social media and website. Probably we should just expand that to electronic communications.
Well, if, yeah, I mean, if Navin can set up a platform that works for students, then that's very easily transferable to what will work for parents. You know, if it's a Twitter site, or if it's, you don't use Facebook, do you? What do you, is a Facebook page? Okay, okay. Then, then that can, that can just be copied out and reposted automatically to, do the same thing for the community and for the parents. And so I think we can mirror each other on that.
At a board retreat, we talked about targeting, I believe it was the students who suggested this as well, it was targeting communications toward the specific audience. So I think that that should be part of the goal, that we look at the various types of communication we have available, and which is best for the target audience.
I agree, I agree. And I think that, I think we need to look at not, you know, constantly reinventing the wheel. I think it came up at the board retreat, that the information that the district puts out in their, in the Friday update is excellent information, and could, almost all of it could be put up on a website or into a social media platform. And so I think that we already have a lot of the content that's generated, that's been checked, and that's ready to post. We just need to find the right, the right vehicle for getting it out there. Another thing that we did mention at the board retreat is having some sort of simple, not simple necessarily, but a newsletter, an annual newsletter that would go out to all of Albany. But because that is a cost item, I didn't mention it. But I do think that if the budget were able to stand a flyer that would, you know, that would list things, like, you know, AMS's accomplishment at getting named as, you know, the only public middle school in California to get this award. I'm not sure that everybody in Albany knows that, and I would like for every single Albany citizen to know that that happened. And, you know, the only way I can think to have that broader reach is to deliver something to their mailbox, and even so, they're not all going to read it, but, but I think that's the most effective that we could become.
Thanks. Mahima, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to echo your statement about making sure that there's some sort of like e-treat or some sort of message that's sent out, maybe in, not annually, but maybe monthly or something, just because I think the issues we talk about here at our meetings are quite important, and a lot of citizens don't know that we are discussing these things and would really like to be a part of the conversation. I know on the Albany Unified School District website, we have the board packets. At the end of them, it's always like, this is when the next meetings are. But if there's a way to synthesize it and make it, and condense this information in a way that's digestible for community members and also students, that'd be great. The other thing I wanted to echo was thinking about creative ways to make communication reciprocal, because the board isn't just a hierarchy that sits here and makes decisions, you know, that we, we talk about, and we don't just make decisions based on what we think that day. So making sure that the public knows that their input is valued and that we want to hear from them, and making sure that there's a space and platform to do that is probably important.
Thanks, Ross.
Yeah, two comments on communication. First, the population of Albany High is qualitatively very different from all the other schools. Ideally, do not have a phone out in middle school ever. You guys are living on your phones, and what I'm thinking is not that the board should intervene, but maybe the two of you should raise this as a, an issue with Principal Ritchie, the administration at the high school, and say, can we talk about communication? Are the kids happy getting PA announcements every day, or is there a better way? I mean, we're really looking at, you know, 1970s-era communication in an organization where now every kid has got a phone. And the ones who haven't got a phone yet still need to be accommodated, but it's really a much more site-specific thing, and you guys are using the technology to know to talk about it with the administrators there. The second comment is to say, I, you know, I think we're 50-plus years old, or years behind in a lot of other communications, so I'm thinking, I go to back-to-school night, and I'm getting the same lecture I would have gotten in, you know, 1960, from the teach, the sage on the stage who's telling me about her class or his class. Why not have teacher presentations about their class online? Why can't I, as a parent who can't get to the school, see that? If we believe in flipped classrooms for instruction, can we believe that in informing the population? This fall, another 300 families, maybe another 280 or so families are going to be learning about the FAFSA yet again. And all the information they learn is going to go out the door with them, and the next generation are going to learn about, you know, college applications, et cetera. We don't have a lot of institutional knowledge captured from all of the people who are collecting it every year, again and again and again. So I think in terms of communication, it's not just a website, and it's not just using Instagram to get out news about what's happening in the district, but it's communication within and among the population of Albany High, as I said first, and then better capturing and informing a lot of communities who are now getting flyers, or someone talking in a little theater, who could be getting a lot of other modes of information, and we could retain more of a corporate memory.
Sure. To respond to the comments made, especially about what Ross just said about communication within the high school. So a lot of the stuff you're talking about, the FAFSA and things that apply to students themselves, is already taken up by the students. Each class has a Facebook group in which there are direct communication with every member of their class. For example, we have a class of 2018 page, so everything that's applicable to us seniors will go through that page, and we'll get notifications. So, say there's a FAFSA workshop coming up, I'll get a notification about that. If there's the college lineup, they'll post that on our page. And this is directly student-run, and on top of that, so students have kind of adapted to this point, where they have their own student-run groups that, based on this new media that everyone's using in terms of social media, texting, you know, Facebook, stuff like that, that is catered towards helping each other out. So in that aspect, I guess to a certain extent, that the communication system between students in terms of communicating with one another about extracurricular things, or just school things in general, is already there. That system's already in place. The systems that we're lacking are communications between students in more formal settings, such as the school board for one, administration, stuff like that. And that's what I'm planning on, working on, the contact between the school board and the student body. Because with the communication working so well between the students, I don't see why we can't play that to school board and have that same kind of communication.
Great, thank you. Okay, so bringing to Jacob, who brought up two important things. One is improving teamwork, both within the board and within the governance team. And that seems a very good goal. We'll need to do some thinking about how to go about that. And the other, of course, is the budget. And clearly, this ties back into communication. There's been a failure of communication already, apparently, in people really understanding what's happening with the budget, with a lot of people thinking we were going to be making a million-dollar cut every, additional million-dollar cut every year. And that's really our fault for letting that wording go out in public. We need to correct that and be sure we fix that. And internal communication, just to make sure that everyone on the board really understands what's going on. So that seems like part of the communication goal, and separate from the communication goal, that certainly one focus of communication this year needs to be related to the budget. And Ross, you were talking about being as flexible as possible with volunteers, sponsors, in addition to flexibility for students.
And I'd like to comment on the flexibility for students, because it is absolutely, there is a huge tension there. I absolutely appreciate, as the parent of a child who went to private school, and a parent of a child who's in public school now, what I don't want to see is us sliding down the road towards pay-to-play any more than we have to. I would hate to see school end up being like sports, which is already pretty problematic, where if you want to be on the varsity, you're going to go to club. The coach will flat-out tell you that, if not, offer the club they also work at as the place to go do it. And I don't want to say, well, we can pare back this and that, because some percentage of kids can go to supplement at Tilden, or can do online courses at MIT. But at the same time, for those who can, I don't want to hamstring them. We don't want the sort of Harrison Bergeron, you know, everybody gets math in the school, and if you take math outside, we shun you. But given the resources we have, we have to be tolerant of people, like, I would love to have universal healthcare, and I would love you to be able to spend your own million dollars augmenting your body however you choose, as long as everybody gets their shots, as long as everybody gets basic care, as long as everybody can be pretty much as healthy as society can afford. So I would, I would, with some caution, say, I'd really love to release the constraints, some of which are merely policy and not dictated, say, by the state, with an awareness that we have to try to be as fair as we can afford to be, and certainly lobby for more funding for education when we can.
Okay, good. So I think we have enough goals, but it's going to take a little bit of sorting to figure out exactly what they are. I'm going to go back and watch this whole discussion again, and take careful notes, and then I will write up my understanding of it for the minutes. And then, we might have to agendize another discussion, just to formalize what the goals are about.
Can your superintendent share something about district goals?
Yes.
Thank you. I want to agree with the communication piece, and maybe to add that I think we, as a school district, really need to look at how we are communicating based upon the technology that we have available today, and the forward thinking. I've heard this from several aspects from parents, who really believe that the way we are putting out our communication platform is outdated. So I agree with Kim. I think we need to really explore ways to communicate better, in terms of the various platforms. I also would like to add, if we can, not only to improve two-way communication between the students and the board, but also between students and your superintendent and staff. Okay, I think that's very important, so if I can add just that extra piece in there. Kim, you brought up something around emergency protocols, and we really didn't talk much about it. That is a goal that I would like to see happen, and that we've already started working on, is looking at the crisis intervention emergency protocols for all of our sites, but that would also be aligned pre-K through 12, so that you don't have one school having one set of protocols, and another that there's alignment. And we are already beginning that work, so I actually would like to see that as a board goal, if we had room for, we're going to do it anyway.
Probably, yes. Kim also mentioned the later morning start time. I don't know if that's a board goal, but it's certainly something that I would be happy for you to continue to keep in your sights, and keep coming back and pushing on it, and maybe even get it on the agenda for a formal discussion.
Yeah, I will comment on that. I think that the wellness committee does, you know, it does have that as item for discussion this year, and not simply the later morning start time. I think the wellness committee is talking, at least within itself, about, about the academic calendar, and might continue to, you know, just, just discuss that. And so that might be the group that will bring forth some ideas, and about what Val, you were saying about the emergency protocols, aligned K-12. And I also think that that also includes some of what Jacob was saying about the interaction between the board and the, and the district office.
Yes, agreed.
We can clarify those responsibilities and roles.
Yes.
Thanks. Okay, so that's the end of our time to talk about goals. And Karen, did you?
I don't know, do you guys want any comments or suggestions at this point? Or do you want to just table it and maybe later? It's getting late.
Well, it's getting late. If you have something quick, we'll be glad to hear you. You need to come up to the mic, though.
I'll just start, and then I'll stop. Does things come to mind as you guys are talking about a communication and emergency protocol, et cetera? We used to do in the past, when I was department chair, I had a list of all of my department people, and the minute something happened, I went through a chain and called everybody, emailed everybody, so everybody was on the same page about some emergency. It could have been personal to somebody. I never experienced anything threatening at the high school. But now, under, in lieu of everything that's happened, natural disaster and otherwise, something very simple that could be immediate in this district is who calls who, who contacts who, who reports to who. Because honestly, we just had a lockdown drill, and I don't know how you students felt about it, but, you know, I've heard in the past, in a lockdown drill, you're not on your cellphone, because that communication can somehow get out to whomever might be threatening us, et cetera. And students, nor teachers, and it hasn't been relayed from administration, at least for a very long time, what the heck would we do? What are we supposed to do? We know what to do within our classrooms, but other than that, communicating outside and stifling whatever communication within the classroom, those are super serious things. I mean, I've been through two Code Reds, and when we know it's real, it's super scary. And in addition, when we run out of that building, if there's to be a fire or something, if we needed supplies, where would we go to get them? We used to have stations, and we used to have volunteer assignments for sort of the triage effect. So those are some quick suggestions. If we reinstituted what we used to do amongst us, at least at the high school, I can't speak for the other sites, I think we'd be much further along, and knowing what to do just intellectually, like, how do I connect with my, with my colleagues and get these kids? And across sites is imperative, because you've got siblings, parents would not know what to do, I'm quite certain, if they couldn't get their kid on the cellphone or something.
Thanks, those are great suggestions. And may I suggest you consult with Chief McQuiston about what people should do in case of lockdown. Okay, we're going to try to wrap this up, so real quickly, Navin had something to say, and then Ross.
I'll save my, the rest for some other time.
Okay. Just a quick note, so I have, I'm usually a pretty prepared person, so I've taken a look at the high schools, at least at my- a look at the high schools, at least in my classrooms, the high schools' emergency kits in terms of like what supplies we have. And I agree with Mr. Hart. I think that, you know, in terms of the supplies that I saw at least, I don't think that would be nearly enough to treat anything ranging from, you know, a lockdown in which we'd have to be in there for a duration of time, all the way to some sort of fire incident. And I think that what she mentioned, a triage idea, or stations where people are grouped up would be much more effective, because in terms of these supplies that we have, not including the backpacks that every teacher carries, you know, the boxes or the storage boxes we have that are full of supplies are usually like really old, like, you know, kind of like bleached cans of Gatorade and like random pieces of cloth that are a little concerning. Because, you know, if we are in some kind of incident where we're locked in a room for four or five hours, you know, are we adequately prepared to deal with that? And say if there's a fire, are we adequately prepared to deal with the injuries that might come with that?
Well, these are great suggestions, but really all we're setting tonight are the goals. We're not trying to figure out how to solve them. So we need to move on. So if I could suggest, actually, that anybody with ideas or suggestions, just email them to the superintendent.
Send it to me.
And we will collect them, and we can agendize it for an actual discussion later in the meeting. Okay, we have another discussion, which is the creation of an ad hoc budget input assessment committee. And there's a bit of an open question about exactly what the deliverables will be from this committee. So that's what we'll need to determine tonight.
Yes, that is correct. I'm going to turn this initially over to Alan, but we both will be able to provide some input and then answer questions if you have any. So Alan, would you like to introduce this?
Sure. Thank you, Superintendent Williams. So the item tonight would be to discuss the committee for the ad hoc budget input assessment committee. The reason for this committee is to, is because we have a survey out, other things that we're doing is we're creating a somewhat short document, but it's still potentially 10 pages, to really provide context to the budget, where people, it'll be an easy read, it'll be something that people can review and digest. And we're planning to send that out early next week. That, based on that document, and then we'll have a town hall meeting on October 21st, Saturday, that more people will provide input through the survey. Based on the survey, we would, this committee comprised of people with many perspectives, such as a teacher from each school site, a parent from each school site, a CSEA member, an SEIU member, two board members, two administrators, really looking at all the input that we're collecting.
And a student board member.
Yes, and a student board member. So hopefully you saw that.
[laughing]
That we would all sit down and really look at all the input that we've collected and really discuss what is that, what is that impact on all the input?
Impact on all the input?
With that, we would then come up with a document that would go to the board on December 5th, that would really outline to everybody, to the board, as well as the community, you know, here's all the input that we've received, here's the impacts for each of the input that we received, as well as potential cost savings. And that would be the deliverable for the committee, is the impact on the input that we receive.
And before you go on, point of clarification, Board Member Clark asked how many board meetings we had in December. We have one regularly agendized meeting, and December 5 is a special board meeting. So we have two board meetings in December.
So budget report, I think it's coming back on the 5th or the 12th? Because originally you said the 5th, and I wanted the next meeting, but you said there was no 19th meeting. So I would try to revise that January 1 to the December.
The 5th would have to be the special meeting?
December 5th is a special board meeting.
That's not okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, Kim?
Okay, I'm recalling the work that I did on the LCAP committee, when we looked through suggestions that came back from all of the groups that we reached out to. And I'm wondering how this process is going to compare to that. What we did with the suggestions that came in for the LCAP is that it was always a pair of people working together that would look at each individual suggestion. And then it was either a duplicate of something that had also come in, you know, they made sure that it was, that it was registered. And then it went, for LCAP, it either went onto a really big board that had all possible suggestions, or it went into, went into the pie in the sky, something that we knew that just wasn't realistic for us to be able to do. So do you envision this committee of 17, because that's a bunch of people, breaking up and working in smaller groups? Or how do you see this happening?
The way I was envisioning it was that-
Microphone.
Oh, sorry. The way I was envisioning it was, we would send the full list of input that was received to the committee members prior to the first meeting. That way, the members of the committee can have an opportunity to digest the information, kind of think about questions, things like that. And then at the meeting, we would review all the suggestions. We would answer any questions in case there's things that people have questions on, such as like if there's an acronym that's embedded in the survey or things like that. And through that, we would really collect all the ideas, but not, we would not need to come to consensus on each idea and what the impact is. Because we all have, we're, we all have perspectives from various school sites. And so an impact that I think about from one school site may be different at another school site. So having all that, having everybody's voice heard through the document would just provide that much more information for the board and the community to look at the survey results.
I think part of what you also asked, that was similar to the LCAP committee, is looking at the duplicates in terms of the feedback, because this feedback's going to be monumental, so it could be a lot. So yes, the committee will be looking at things that are duplicated, so you're not saying the same thing over and over and over again. But in terms of looking at the impact on students, you'd mentioned pie in the sky. We, the committee will need to look at things that are so lofty that, you know, if we have to have a program that we can't necessarily cut because it is so critical to students. The other piece might be for this committee to also look at and get information on what legally we have to have that is mandated. So like, so made a suggestion on the survey that we knew was illegal, then the committee would know that also, would be able to filter through those pieces of it.
So they are going to do a cull. You're going to cull out things that are illegal? That's, I think, what you said.
Correct. There would be things noted on the, so there'd be this list that would go to the board and the community on December 5th. And that list would have the input from the survey kind of categorized so that it's manageable document. People would then see the impact for each of the survey responses, as well as, is that something that we legally can or cannot do? Is that something that may be against a collective bargaining agreement? Is that something that could be against a, you know, something? And then those would all be, those would all be kind of-
They'll be compiled.
Compiled, so that what would be kind of in the realm of possibility would be the list of things that we can do because it is legal, or it doesn't violate a contract, or things like that.
But even, even things that appear to be duplicates will need to be looked at carefully, because sometimes you may look at two items that look like duplicates, but might have a nuance in it, and may need to be consolidated. So that, I mean, it's not that you say, well, this is duplicates, we're just going to like consolidate them all into that. I think you're going to have to look at each one to look at in its own merit, what is truly a duplicate and what is maybe a nuanced version of, that could mean something else.
Can I answer your question, Jacob?
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, could you put up the, on page 27, or 225?
Page 225, please.
Oh, it's not as easy as I thought. It'll take, oh, there we go.
There we go, thank you. If you could just scroll down a little bit to the details section. Once again, if we're asking for all these people to be involved, I want to make sure that that first bullet point with the $3 million is really what it is. Earlier I was talking about it, well, now it's on the agenda. So we don't need to talk about it right now, because I know it's getting late. But if it's really not $3 million, that needs to be changed. And as far as the other bullet points underneath it, those were originally the questions that were on the survey that you sent out. And I thought since then I had asked to add something, which I think you did, as far as how deep and fast does the community want to cut. But it's not here. So maybe you can add that back into one of those bullet points.
So the request for the, for adding that question is that first bullet? So when somebody looks, takes the survey, they have three options. One option is to do $3 million this year. The other option is to do $3 million over two years. And then the third option is do $3 million over three years.
Correct, on the survey.
Yes.
But it's not showing that here. So if you can just, for someone who's reading this, who might be a member of the public, you know, or the teacher or whatever, it just needs to be clear. Because the way I'm reading that first bullet point doesn't say as clearly as what you just said.
Right, it says, how do you want to implement these cuts, but it's not specific. So if you just added a little more.
Like you did on the survey. Like you just said, I think that's much clearer.
Okay.
Okay, so I think that we should reflect these in the minutes, please. So I want to make sure that we capture, so.
Would we create sub-bullets of what the three-
Well, the question is, who's going to see the bullets? Are you sending out a flyer looking for members of the committee? The important thing is that when you're soliciting membership on the committee, that they understand that that's what they're looking at.
That we have that extra bullet that's in there, is that correct?
Yeah, and once again, I don't want to keep us here, that $3 million, really hard poor proof that that is accurate. Because I just looked at the chart again, and that's if we don't cut. Three years down, we're at 3.2. But if we do cut, I don't see how that, just this, it's such a round number. Like, it's not 3.2, 2.85. I mean, it just seems to, $3 million.
Yeah, I should say-
It can't be, it can't just be exactly $3 million, you know? I mean, the odds of that are really, it needs to, not an estimate, you know?
Yeah, it could be nuanced. It could say around $3 million. It could say over the next, you know, three years, if there are no new sources of income. You know, it could be a little bit more nuanced than that.
And just one last thing. I take this job serious. I try to do as much as I can, but I am a teacher in San Leandro, so a lot of times I can't go to things like this. When I saw that they were Wednesday at 5 o'clock, I can make those. So I don't want to kind of jump in front of anybody else. And I don't know how the process is. It shows to two board members. So I would-
Good.
-like to put my name in as a possible-
Let's put Jacob in there. Charlie expressed some interest. He's not here tonight, so let's check with him on those dates. And if he can't make it, then we'll see if somebody else can.
So if nobody else, I'll do it for sure then. Okay.
Thanks, Jacob.
Thanks.
Excellent.
So I'm sorry, I do not mean to beat the dead horse, but I want to make sure that we're clear. I want to, we heard clearly that we want whatever flyer that we put together to solicit members of this committee, that we have the accurate numbers placed on there.
Yeah, let me suggest that Alan do a draft, send it to me, I'll send it to Jacob. He can make sure it's clear and it makes sense to him. And if not, then he can meet with Alan and get clarification. Just complete the circle and make sure that the wording is good.
That would be great. I mean, I've been talking to people too. I mean, I've mentioned I'm on the bargaining team in San Leandro. I look at stuff like this. So if I'm confused, there's a pretty good chance that somebody just picking up a packet or a flyer is not very clear about what it's saying.
I would just like to add that, Paul, when you said around $3 million, that I thought made a lot of sense. Because Val, you just said accurate numbers, and I think that, I think bringing it out to the hundredth decimal place is not going to be helpful here. I think that, you know, it could be a bit less than $3 million, but around that, I think is what people need to-
And a lot will depend on what the state does, which of course, we can't know.
Right. So there's so many unknowns. So it needs to be a general number, not an exact.
Okay, well, there's no vote required. This was a discussion, Adam. I think we did what we need to do. Jacob?
Yeah, just, she's saying more of a general number. Maybe it doesn't have to be down to the penny. But based on the chart I looked at, if we make a 1.15 million cut, that needs to be reflected. And if we're talking, I don't know, tens of thousands or hundreds of thousands, I mean, without going into much deeper, I don't, I don't think it's like close to $3 million. I think it's substantially less.
We'll make sure we clarify that.
But I'm saying if it's substantially less, I don't want language that says around $3 million.
Agreed.
Okay.
Okay. So that's it. So that brings us to agenda items and matters introduced by the board.
Okay, so I have, I have a list, and not necessarily that it's, I don't think we're going to agendize, but let me go through the list. Reference to confidential employee group, identification of who's in the confidential employee group, I'll have staff-
It's not an agenda item, but you're going to-
It's not an agenda item, so that, okay.
Something you're going to take care of.
Okay, hang on, let's see. Member Clark motioned to place the 9% reserve on the first January board agenda.
Right, it's seconded by Kim, so-
It was seconded by Kim, is being placed on the issues benefit of the agenda committee. That was the one item. The rest were requested staff.
Okay, and there might be other agenda items that come out of the goals. There certainly will be, but we'll figure that out as we go along. Okay, that's it. Meeting is adjourned.